Good call to the nice meeting, order of the roll.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Rorden.
Here.
Ebert.
Here.
Binner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Nice invitation, we give a pass pastor Elizabeth.
The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, we give you thanks for this city and for those that serve here. We ask you to send your spirit to be among this council meeting this evening, that they might discuss everything that's good in your world. Help to remind them that all things are a gift from you and that we give thanks to you for the great creation. Bless our city, bless our council, bless all those that work for our city and guide them in their deliberations this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Fideligence.
The allegiance certified of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting the presentation approval minutes, eight minutes of July 22nd, 2019. Ms. Pardon?
I make emotional except the minutes of July 22nd, 2019 as presented.
Second.
No second, except the minutes, July 22nd, 2019. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Substained.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ebert.
Upstayed.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
I have one citizen to be heard. We have nothing on the agenda. Two approval licenses and bonds, nothing on the agenda. Three infection ordinance resolutions, nothing on the agenda. Item four, notice and communications governing body announcements. Ms. Crum?
Just reminder at the library, story timer every Tuesday and Thursday at 10:30. Quilters are there each Monday and Thursday morning. And then tomorrow at two o'clock, they'll have their summer matinee movies, Plan of 51, their showing tomorrow. Also tomorrow at 6:00 PM, there'll be a Medicare seminar in the community room over there. On the August 17th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, there'll be a Red Cross blood drive going on over there. The 24th is the next Meeple Mayhem Day over there at the library too. And then for school, just want to remind everybody that school is going to start on Thursday for K-6 and 9th graders and on Friday for everybody else. Just remind everybody, please watch school buses, stop signs come out, make sure you stop both ways. I know I would really appreciate it if you stopped at crosswalks when the light turned red and you slowed down to 20 in the crosswalk areas and the school zones we have here in town. Especially early on, the people are in a hurry to get to school because their kids are excited to get there and the kids that are walking or riding bikes are excited. Sometimes they're not always watching. Just please be diligent and let's not have any accidents out there. That's all I have.
Is your?
Yes, I'd like to add to what Mr. Crum said, Councilman Crum. Kindergarten does not start until the 19th. We are testing the kindergarten children on Thursday and Friday and you need to set up an appointment through the schools to do that. So don't send your kindergarteners to school on the 15th. That's all I have.
Senior Senate announcements, Wednesday, August 14th, the diabetes class and pre-putting pressure checks at 8:30. Also on Wednesday, August 14th, they've got a movie outing, The Art of Racing in the Rain. If you're wanting to go, they'll pull a V at the center by noon. Thursday, August 15th, mystery lunch at 11:00. Monday, 19th, pizza party in Domino's at 11:30. Wednesday, August 21st, common ground mobile market, 11:45. They also have commodities on Wednesday, 21st at 1:00. And then Saturday, the 24th, Thursday, friends and family breakfast at 8:30. Those are your senior senate announcements. If you'd like to be a party just over, they will sign you up. No other announcements, we're on to all business. We have nothing. Item six of the business, a public hearing for the consideration and approval of the proposed 2020 budget. So I'd open a motion to entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the proposed 2020 budget. Mr. Binner?
I make a motion that we open the public hearing for the consideration of your proposed 2020 budget.
Second.
No second, to open the public hearing for the budget. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
The public hearing is now officially opened. Any members of the audience would like to speak for or against the proposed budget? Seeing none? If there's any other members of the audience wishing to speak on the budget, not entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the budget on 2020? Ms. Pardon?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and second to close the public hearing. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Floor now open for any discussion the council would like to do on the budget. And then we would need a motion to approve the budget if that's what you want to do. Ms. Crum?
First, I want to commend Will and everybody else that worked on the budget. I think it looks good and I'm glad we can give that little bit of cut like we have the last few years. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed 2020 budget as presented.
Second.
No second to approve the 2020 budget as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Out of each, consideration a to purchase a fuel dispenser.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have received bids to replace the, replace and install new unleaded and diesel fuel dispensers located at Public Works. The current fuel dispensers are utilized by Police Department and Public Works. The current ones were manufactured in 1970. Parts for repairs and maintenance have become obsolete. The new fuel system will operate with keypad and proximity cars, which will allow us to better monitor use of fuel. And I am requesting authorization to accept a bid from Double Check Company in the amount of $23,170.
Mr. Crum, how are we paying for it?
It's going to be split with PD and Public Works funds.
Was it already a budgeted item?
It was not a budgeted item, but we've seen expense reports with our fuel, a little bit lower to where we're able to fit those in the same budget line items.
We did put it in the 2019 revised column for the budget.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve a bid of $23,170 with Double Check Company, Inc. for new fuel dispensers.
Second.
No second to approve the purchase of the fuel dispenser as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
I'm seeing consideration of purchase of a makeup air unit.
We have also received bids for replacement of the makeup air unit at the wastewater treatment facility, the Ultra Violet Disinfection Building. The current unit was originally installed when the treatment plant was constructed in 1996. It has also required costly ongoing maintenance. We are requesting authorization to accept the bid from Commercial Mechanical in the amount of $16,900. This is a budgeted item and will be paid out of wastewater plant project expense. Can I stand for any questions?
Ms. Crum?
What do we know about Commercial Mechanical? Because I'll be honest with you, when I see bids come in and one of them's like 30% lower than the other ones, I'm kind of a red flag. What?
We've actually done extensive projects with them. If you remember correctly, the Headworks building makeup air unit that we did, I think it was last calendar year, they were the ones that did that as well. And I think you actually had the same question with them. We did a lot of work with them and so far, all the work we've done with them, the next exception.
They did the boiler and library.
Yes.
Also.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rorden?
Well, I was just going to interject there. I do business with all three of these companies. Commercial Mechanical has always come in lower bids than anybody I've ever had and they always do good work.
Does your?
I just have a question. You'll probably all laugh at me, but what is a makeup air unit?
So basically, I would compare it to kind of your household, you know, heating and air unit, but in industrial setting. So it exhausts the air, but also heats and cools it as well.
Okay, I won't tell you what I thought it was.
Mr. Crum?
Go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid from Commercial Mechanical, Inc. for $16,900 for a wastewater makeup air unit.
Second.
A no second to approve the purchase of makeup air unit as presented. Question? Ms. Crum?
I just noticed on the thing, it says, "Unit not to exceed." Should I change my motion to say not to exceed? It's a hard bid, so it's a hard bid. Okay.
Other question? Call question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes, thank you.
Going to the item D, which is the city sales tax midterm report.
So we've had the sales tax for right around five years now. So we've got that report as requested. We've actually received 59 full payments on it, full monthly payments. So the history ordinance number 1,006 back in 2014, this is an excerpt from it. Shall a retailer's sales tax in the amount of 1% be levied in the city of Hayesville to fund a local street, park, and recreation improvement program? This question was asked on April 1st of 2014 and carried 285 to 269, was certified on April 7th and the sales tax took effect on July 1st of 2014. It was for, set for 10 years. History on the revenues, the Department of Revenue initially thought that we would get $519,000 a year based on our 2013 sales data. We received our first full, we received our first revenue payment in August of 2014, it was very small. And then we received our first full month in September of 2014. And from September through the end of the year, we received a total of $231,000. If you just look at that over what it would have been over a full year, if you just use an average monthly amount, it would come out to $693,000, which was quite a bit more than the $520,000 estimate that they gave us. Here are the totals for each year. See in 2015, it was $806,000 for our first full year, then went up to 863 and then dropped down to 830. 2018 was close to $900,000. This year, we budgeted $900,000 and also next year. And we're on pace to exceed that, just looking at a monthly average for this year. This one might not be too easy to read, but this shows the amount we received in January, February, March, and throughout the year, and it shows each year. So as you look at the groupings, 2014 is on the left and 2019 on the right. This next one might be a little more useful. It's grouped by year, so you can see the trend of slightly going up in general. And you can see a few of the months were quite a bit higher. But overall, if you drew a line through there on the average, it'd be going up. Here it is in number form, our total received in sales, the 1% sales tax throughout the 59 payments we've received is $4,176,000, interest of $16,500. Our expenditures there totaled up, we'll see a breakdown of those later. And our fund balance around the end of July, between the three funds, $922,000, which the bulk of that is in street. We've still got most of, over 90% of our street program for this year still to pay out. So that number will come down quite a bit once we do all the planned projects and street program. First year, 2014, we set this to be 50% going to street, 25 to park, and 25 to rec. That was also the same breakdown for 2015. In 2016, we got into the building payment for the new activity center, so we shifted funds over to the recreation. We've had 50% of street every year. And as you can see there, rec is at now 40 and park is 10, and that's what we also budgeted in 2020. On the expenditures, we've got the breakdown for street. We've got, the first line is labeled expense, and those are basically ones that don't fit any of the remaining categories. We've got materials, concrete aprons, curb and gutter, valley gutter, melon overlay, and slurry seal. And you'll see a visual representation of that. Most of what we've done so far, close to half of it's been slurry seal. We've shifted our street program this year. You're going to see more of the melon overlay, which gives us a better surface, we think it'll last longer. The park sales tax, can see there, the main two expenditures were grounds and equipment. We can see also we pay for wifi out of there, the city wifi, repairs or things that need to be done on the fountain at the northeast corner of Main and Grand, also out of there. So when you look at that, the equipment and the grounds are the main expense. And you can think about equipment, you think about the parks, we've redone the equipment. We'll see some pictures of those as we go on. Recreation, the number one expenditure there is debt payment. You can see that started up with a full payment in 2016. This year, we've just paid the first half of the interest, so by the end of the year, that'll be up around that $255,000 number. Here we've got programs, office expense, insurance for the activity center, things down at Plague and Carpenter, equipment maintenance, and purchase of new equipment. The debt payment I already talked about, and then building improvements. The big building improvement in 2019 is the concession stand down on the new soccer fields in Dorner Park. So of course, debt payment is over half there. You can see the other big three, building improvements, programs, and equipment maintenance. So we're going to look at some of the projects. We're going to see a lot of before and after pictures. Here in 2014, we did a feasibility study for the activity center. Should we remodel the current one or build a new one? And what it resulted in was the new activity center. Some of the things that were included in the activity center, new cardio equipment, all the machine weights were upgraded, upgraded dumbbells and added weights, upgraded the plate weights, added the power rack and lifting platform, and then numerous circuit training pieces. Also, the equipment, lounge equipment, office furniture within the activity center, the bike racks outdoors, bleachers that are in the gym there, security cameras and table and chairs for the rental room in the activity center. Some of the things that were paid for out of the recreation sales tax over the years, uniforms, medals, soccer goals, nets, bats, other things for baseball, volleyball. The scholarships for those who were not necessarily able to pay for the program on their own. Different events like the movie nights, which we have one coming up on Saturday at the pool, which I'll announce later. The new scoreboard on field one, we paid for half of that, and the school district paid for the other half. The new scoreboards on fields 2, 3, and 4 at Plague and Carpenter. The pool, the recently added lounge chairs, added newer life jackets, picnic tables, the wifi that's covering the pool, security cameras around there and refinishing the floors inside. Here's the before and after of Pear Tree Park. This was done early on, 2014, 15, park sales tax funds, Orchard Acres Park and the shelter there. Got the before and after there. Riggs Dock and also fixing the rip wrap around Riggs Park Lake, and then also added the dock at Old Oak Park. Kirby Park before and after. This is actually a shot from one of the security cameras down at the skate park. And then some of the same equipment is used both for the city wifi and the security cameras, same technology. Riggs Park before and after on the swings. Whistler Park before and after. Riggs Park there by the lake. Here's the, here's quite a drastic change on this before and after at Colmia Park. You see the additional volleyball pit, shade structures in that park playground equipment there and the bike rack there on the corner of the parking lot, an additional sidewalk to get back and forth. Drinking fountains, we got one here at Vickers, also have the one in Riggs Park. The soccer fields down in Dorner Park, concession stand, and then the dog park, including those items there that you can see. And of course, the lake.
And the lake, this is a picture of the lake completed as far as its water continuing to come up, but that, the dirt work has been completed.
So that's what we've got. Do you guys have any questions or anything else you'd like to see?
Ms. Crum?
I guess, I'm just curious. I know we saw, I don't know what all recreation's in charge of. Do they do, do we, or is any of the recreation or parks money available for the senior center to use for the activities they do? Is it available for, well, I guess senior center is the one I'm most curious about. Because I know they do a lot of activity over there for the older people.
I know there's a specific program that they're doing, the basically like gentle chair yoga. We budgeted that in the senior center budget for this upcoming year, so.
So the rec does do some stuff over senior center in there?
What I'm saying is we budgeted for the senior center program that was requested to me in the budget for 2020. Not out of, not out of the sales tax.
2020, okay.
Yeah.
But it's in the senior center budget.
Right, senior center budget.
Yeah, I mean, the vote was specific on which ones are those things that were there.
Well, that's why I didn't know if, I didn't know if rec did any activities at the senior center with the seniors.
No.
Okay.
They do not.
What was the total number on the money we've paid out on street so far?
Million four fifty-seven, wasn't it?
Well, rec was, that's why I was, I was curious why rec and streets were so close.
Because we, the rec has to pay for the building payment.
Well, yeah, but we're still, we did 48% one year and then 47 something, and we've been doing 50 on the streets every year. I was thinking the streets were 1.4, but I thought that's also what rec said.
So for the street, yeah, 1.487, for the rec, 1.4. We've still got that larger balance in street that's going to get paid out for the street program this year.
Yeah, they're over 2.
Oh, okay, that's right, you said, okay.
Yeah, they've been about another half a million dollars that'll go out of that industry. You know, we haven't paid the payment yet on the activity center.
Just the first half interest.
We just paid the interest, but we have the large payment of 200 some thousand still to be paid out of that. So the 900,000's going to increase considerably pretty quick.
The only other question is, do we have any idea from the state why it seems to fluctuate so much? I mean, because like you, we've got that one, I think, from like 16 or 17, it's like crazy higher than all the rest of them. We don't.
We get between 16, 80,000 a month usually, but sometimes we get 90, sometimes we get that 100.
Sometimes because of the timing, I think, comes in as to when the retailers get it to them, as timing was, I think. Or how many vehicles, how many vehicles may get purchased. I think the vehicles make a big difference too. Ms. Kessler?
I know about a year or so ago, I think Derby and maybe another city had sued the state to, because we were being tipped out of the money that we were supposed to be receiving. I know that was in their favor, in the city's favor. Have we seen the difference or have we seen the money coming in that we're supposed to be getting?
We know that they corrected it, but you can't see the difference because the average is about what the average is, and then we have some months that are higher. So we don't have a detailed breakdown of how much of that is the compensating use tax.
So they don't give you any type of proof that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting?
It's, from what we get, it's impossible to tell how much more we got from when they corrected that on the state system.
So we just get what they give us and then let's see what's correct?
That's what they expect us to do.
That's what the state does.
No more questions? No questions? You're correct. The way they sent it to us is really not very well broken down at all. Other questions? Anywhere, council? Ms. Crum?
No questions. I was just the one that requested it. Thanks. I would be curious, can I get that in a hard copy, just like, or email it to me?
I think we might be putting on the website, so it's out there for people to see.
Yeah, or if you need hard copy, we can get hard copy.
Either way.
Well, you can send it to me.
We'll need a flash drive because it's not going to send well.
Okay. Because I think that's good to know. We need to kind of let people know that the next five years of, you know, almost $2 million worth of street work, that wouldn't have got done without that, so.
Right, and when we start replacing streets this next year, it'll be even better as far as the storage goes away as we go replacing the streets. Okay, no more questions. We'll go to item E, quarterly economic development update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You have before you the quarterly economic development update. Only one business this quarter, Lionato Body Repair. The conversation we've been having in our Hazel Forward Economic Development Group is that we're kind of at a good state where we're running out of real estate for brick and mortar. The spaces are full up. If they're not full, there's a reason behind that, whether it be the landlord charging too much for their space and people can't afford to move in there. But all of our affordable brick and mortar is really, really filling up, so I'm still okay with that. Our next push is to look at our industrial park, looking for new development, new buildings, as well as the 71st and kind of the Meridian Corridor is our next look. So I'm optimistic that that will continue. Our new home construction, best quarter ever, nine, nine new home builds, $1.7 million in permits pulled. New water, new residence surveys, we had 58, which is pretty much par for what we're looking at. But I will say that, you know, buy is 54% versus renting 46%. We're seeing, again, that uptick in people, more people buying than renting. Wampo, I'll skip over to Wampo, the 5310 project, we're teeing it up on our end to get the positions ready, what vehicle will look like, how that program will work. We're just currently waiting on the federal funds to be distributed. As soon as they're, they come in, we'll look to move forward with that. We're currently working on the application for the master transportation plan and the transportation improvement plan. We're submitting Seneca, Seneca Street, 63rd Street, and Maple Street hike and bike pathway. We're hopeful that that will, that will take and we can get that on a federal split of 80/20. So fingers crossed, but we definitely giving it a good shot. The Hazel Land Bank, again, River Forest, you know, we sold the remaining lots over there and it's the, kind of the problem that, it's not a problem, but as fast as they can build the spec homes, they're being sold. It's the same way over in Country Lakes. So Klos Meyer builds a, builds a home and it's, they close on it. So those are really good problems. We are closed out over there in River Forest, in the developed part. We still control the 39 undeveloped lots and we're looking to program those here in the near future. Timber Creek Estates, we had 39 lots available. We have closed on one. We have three contracts under contract. And I, like I said, I have a couple more that are floating and close to making a commitment. Now that the streets are in, I think it's, if people can drive back there and see what they might be building on or future potential. It's, it's going to only spiral. We've got, you know, our, our marketing campaign that will be, that has already shifted towards Timber Creek, but we'll, we'll kind of hit the accelerator a little bit once we, we get the green light from Evergy that they're done installing electric. So special events, we have a Cruisin' Days. Those have been very popular. We'll look to continue to have those. Those are the last Saturday of every month. They're free. The Boy Scouts serve food. We've got shaved ice out there, market vendors come, live music, and it's a free car show. It is just a Cruisin', so there's no, no fee required. Wayfinding, we're, I've got a company coming in this week that's going to take a look at the city because we're, we're wanting to get moving on our wayfinding signage. We, we've kind of been held up by another, another issue, but hopefully we'll have wayfinding here coming sooner than later. Assisted living facility, I'm just going to tease it that hopefully I have a better report in third quarter. But we are making strides and making headway and forward progress with the assisted living facility. Wichita State, we're about to, I think we have like three or four little free libraries ready to go. We're trying to coordinate with Public Works to get those installed. They'll be gone in the parks, Riggs Orchard Acres, and I think there's a handful of other locations. We did just do a ribbon cutting for Diverse Care. If you haven't driven by and seen their, their chicken coop, little free library, they're very pleased with it. If you don't know, Diverse Care does have an actual chicken coop inside the grounds and they do have chickens, so that's the idea of the theme. Wichita State is also doing their HVAC program, which the program enrollment is eight to 16. I believe they have enough to carry that through. Literally, junior, senior can walk with a diploma and a certificate HVAC, so that's, that's a really good deal to have at 18. I think they said, we were trying to decide whether they said enrollment was up 16 or 18%, so I'm going to split the difference and say 17%. They're happy with their enrollment and they only see that trend continuing, continuing. I believe Wichita State's putting several thousands of dollars into the, several thousand into their, like their main event space. of dollars into the, uh, several thousand into, uh, their, like, their main event space to update the technology to where they can, uh, do some sort of lab work in there, I don't wanna misquote it, but I, if I remember right, I heard thirty thousand, but I could be wrong, but either way, then, we're happy that they're, uh, taking that space, making it their own, and expanding, so, I'm open for questions or clarification?
Have we ever, have you got any word from anybody that built this laundromats, and have we decided if we wanna try to offer something to try to incent to get somebody to come in here?
Talked to the owner of the building, he offered to put in a new laund- laundromat for the person who was there, and that person declined, didn't want another laundromat, not making, not making that money for putting in the laundromat, so, that's why they declined, not, not wanting to put another one in. So, recruiting one would not work at all, it's not making any money at this point. He offered to even build, guy a new building and put in all new orchards and dryers and everything, and the guy said, no, no way.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Item seven, the term reports, Ministry of Services. Puffing?
None.
Dave Clark? Please, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Council, um, just wanted to start off by saying thanks to everybody that came out for National Out, both our, uh, sponsors, all the volunteers, and the groups that worked with us, um, and of course, all the citizens that came out and made the night a success, we've had, uh, quite a few people there, it was a well-attended event, um, had a good time, had excellent weather for it, it wasn't too warm, thank goodness it was last weekend, not this week. Our visiting officer this week is Sergeant Chad Case, um, he is currently assigned to our night shift as a supervisor, um, so say hi to him as you go by out there, and I just wanted to, uh, just remind everybody, as Mr. Crum said and Ms. Ewert said, uh, school does start this week, so just give yourself a few extra minutes to get wherever you're going in the mornings and in the afternoons, um, a lot of people take their kids to and from school, uh, during that first week and drop them off, and, and, uh, some of the kids, it's their first time walking to school, so just keep that in mind, give yourself a few extra minutes, take it slow, take it easy, um, watch for those kids, 'cause they may come out of nowhere, so, just, uh, keep an eye out for them, and just keep everybody safe, thank you.
Thank you. Tony, that works? And, we'll have something for George.
So, this Saturday is the movie night at the pool, starting at eight fifteen, they'll be showing Incredibles Two, and then on Sunday, from one to two thirty, is dog days at the pool, bring your dog, and it costs five dollars per dog, and get in, let your dog swim around the pool.
Late appointment, A, Janie Hummel, three fifty-six East Timber Creek, she's employed at the library for four years, this is a, she had filled an appointment previously, and now this is the full year. Mr. Crum?
Uh, make a motion, go ahead and, uh, have you appoint Janie Hummel, three fifty-six East Timber Creek, uh, to an appointment to the library board for a four-year term.
Second.
Motion second to approve the appointment of Janie Hummel to the library board, discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item nine, off agenda, citizen should be heard, any citizens that would like the council to, uh, hear what they have to say, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and tell the council what you would like to discuss.
Uh, Kevin Both, one twenty Trout Avenue, um, I'd like the council to discuss, uh, maybe putting an amendment for commercial fencing, uh, we own the properties straight to the south, and currently it's changed in two thousand and three, I believe, to no longer allow metal fence paneling, uh, which there's some grandfathered in, um, I had talked to the city council, or this rose, um, about it, to put up a fence, I purchased, um, purchased fence to put up around everything and then went to go get my permit, and they told me I couldn't put up metal paneling, it's also gonna be painted the color of the buildings, so, I was just wondering if we could try and work something out to make progress on commercial property.
At this point, we've had no one, uh, have a problem with the code, making sure that all their fencing meets code at this point, so, I don't see a reason why we wanna bring it up at this point, uh, discussing and changing the code, we've had no problems with it.
Well, um, I talked to a detective, and he said it would be better for, you know, for their, on their side of things, to make sure everything's secured, I've been told there's been complaints about being able to see my property through the fence, whatnot, that's already there, um, there's also metal fence that's already there that would be taken down, and it would all be color matched to the, the buildings and whatnot, I think it would improve the, the look of the area.
We can discuss it, uh, I wouldn't recommend it at this point, we can see what Public Works and the rest of them want, wanna do, but, um, it's to the council, they don't change code on any of the commercial at this point.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in. Uh, I take the exception, I'm ten, we have nothing, item eleven, bills be paid, A, bills be paid for the first half of August. Ms. Ewert?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we allow you to pay the first half of August bills.
Second. Motion second, pay the bills first half of August, discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Item seven, set agenda, we have nothing, item thirteen, council items, A, concerns of council. Mr. Kessler?
Uh, I just had a couple, um, several weeks ago, I was at the, uh, baseball stadium with that concession stand, and it's pretty hot, and, um, the fans were not running in there, asked why not, and they said that every time they turn them on, uh, a breaker blows, so I don't know if that's still a problem or not.
Where's that?
Where? The concession stand at, uh, Ballfields.
Haven't heard it.
Blenkins, yes.
Yeah, we haven't been aware of that.
We haven't, I guess we haven't been told, but we can, we'll check it out, find out.
And, um, also at the pool, there's a, there's like a, I think it's a yellow metal table, um, the coating is coming off, you see the rust and all that, um, it bobbles really bad, uh, you have to balance it out, someone sit on one side, someone sit on the other side, so, does it tip over? Um, anyway, so, you know, someone could, uh, take a look at that, also, uh, this weekend, walking around, uh, Broad Hills and stuff, it also, several yards had, uh, grass clippings in the gutter, um, I know that's not authorized, so, um, nobody probably goes around on weekends to look at that type of thing, but, uh, not till, you know, Monday morning when the water rained and everyone's, everyone's irrigation, you know, pushes it on down to, you know, the creeks or, uh, holding detention ponds, things like that, so, maybe just a reminder to, to people to, uh, not put the grass clippings in the gutters.
Mr. Crum?
Um, the rim wrap at the park, it's, uh, we've done it twice now, and then the last time we did it, we put bigger rocks in, but, the east side is almost completely, all the rocks are almost completely gone again, I know we've had heavy rains, I know it comes up, I'm wondering if we need to try to see if we can find somebody to come in to see if we need to slope the edges more, if we need to put in bigger rocks, if we need to somehow support them up to help them stay, because it needs done again, I mean, I think when we first do it, it does a great job of what it, you know, it, it makes it look better, it cuts down on the geese over there, it really does, 'cause the geese don't like it, but, I know it's expensive, and we've already done it twice, and it needs again already, so I'm wondering, I, I'd like to see us be able to do it again, but, I, I want us to make sure that we get it right, so that it'll last more than, you know, six months or nine months or whatever.
I think we used a larger rock this time than we did last time, be right, it seems to, uh, disappear, whether it's on the bottom of the pond or where it hit.
I'm pretty sure it's on the bottom of the pond.
We can check in and see what, what's out there, I know the, uh, the rock that was put around, uh, went out to the east.
Yeah.
Uh, it went underwater, and it seemed to stay pretty good, and I know we did that, so, we can check and see what's here.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other, um, items, we'll go to item E, Council Act Request Updates.
Uh, in reference to one thirty-eight Western, uh, property was in violation of grass over twelve inches, uh, the property was mowed on July twenty-sixth, case is considered closed. Two twenty-six Western, uh, the property had concrete chunks, chunks in the valley gutter, uh, owner has since removed the concrete chunks from the gutter, case is considered closed as well, and then two thirty-eight Western, uh, property had grass over twelve inches, and the owner has since mowed, and the case is considered closed.
Item fourteen, adjournment.
Mayor Council, make a motion during tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn, discussion? Question?
Excuse me, Kessler?
Yes, ma'am.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?